Good evening. And let's go ahead and begin our study session this evening for April the 13th. This evening, we will have presentations. We're going to start right, right off the top?
Yep.
We're going to start right off the top with Dr. Lane's enrollment update. And he's going to follow that up with, I believe, a staffing update. And then-
They will be one in the same.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and connect to the meeting here. So just give me one moment. Getting your step sensor.
What are you doing?
I was looking to share my content. And it says only the host can share this thing. That's right. Okay. You're kind of running the mass. Sir, am I upstairs?
Oh, hold on.
It looks like, I mean, does it look like- We're good. All right. Thanks for your patience. With that, as I, as I said when I started and kind of as Mrs. Crowe alluded to, I know that enrollment and staffing are separate items on the study session agenda for tonight. But I'm going to cover both topics in the same conversation. Because they really, they're not completely unrelated. In, in, in fact, they're quite related. So here's what we want to take a look at tonight. We're going to take a look at three things. Okay, we're going to take a look at enrollment trends in the district from a really high 30,000-foot view. The documents, I'll show you some charts regarding enrollment. The Excel spreadsheets from which those charts were generated, I can share with you as well. But I just kind of wanted to give you the big picture on enrollment trends in the district. I wanted to also talk about the budget context in which those enrollment trends exist in the district. And then how both of those things influence decisions that we're making about staffing. So that's why it's appropriate to really put all three of these things together. Enrollment trends in context, our budget realities in the staffing options that we have. All right. So if we take a look at the last 10 years, okay, what, what we see here in the General McLean School District mirrors what we're seeing across Erie County in northwestern Pennsylvania. Okay, we have seen a slow but steady and predictable decline in enrollment that comes out to just over, just over 2% a year. Okay, is what we're seeing really consistently. If you take a look at the chart, you see a little bump in our 21-22 school year. But that's really just a result of students coming back to us after that first year of COVID. And if you take that 21-22 year and then average it with, you know, 2020, if you take 21-22, average it with 2021 or 22-23, you see that we're still just on that steady predictable 2% decline. So I guess one thing that's important to note on this track, on this graph, there's two things. One, please don't, true data people would not be happy with me that the Y-axis starts at 1850 rather than zero. Because it looks like 23, 24, and 24, 25, our enrollment is one-third of what it was in 1617. We know that's not the case, though. Okay? So it doesn't start at zero, but that's okay. And also, really, I think the thing to just take a look at is that trend line. Okay, that we see over a 10-year period. Okay, so regardless of what that looks like, we're seeing that 2% over year to year. This next slide visualizes what I noted in that what we're seeing here at GM compares to the rest of the region. So our decline of just over 2% a year is very similar to other districts. Okay, I stopped this chart in 1819 prior to the COVID year because the data for 1920 and 21, 2021 is just really wonky countywide. It's just all over the place. But if I were to put 21-22 on there, you'd see a replication of this again. Okay, this is what it looks like in northwestern Pennsylvania. I could pull this all the way back to 1112 for a 10-year comparison, but to be perfectly candid, that's a lot of work on my part. And it was going to look the same as it does here. So I stopped just with 1516 to 1819. Okay, in terms of looking at that as well. Okay. So what does this look like at a building level for us? So if we talk more locally, what, what does this look like for us? It's really the same thing. If you look at all four of our buildings, okay, you know, if we start at McCain, these trends from last year through 2425 are similar to what we see in the district and the region. They replicate, what we see district and regionally replicates itself in our buildings. Okay, or maybe you could say it goes the other way. But either way, they mirror each other. So if you look at the school year, you'll see maybe in, you know, 2122, you see that bump in kindergarten from 2020 to 2021. But you know, that, that's predictable. We talked about why that happened. We knew that was going to happen after COVID. We talked about all those red-shirted kindergarten kids that came back after their parents held them. And then we see a return to what is a trend line that looks like all the other trend lines I'm going to show you for the rest of these buildings? And all the other trend lines that we see both around the county and within our own district. All right, so this MES enrollment, we know we're currently at 329 students. We know we'll bump up a little bit. And across all of these trend lines, you'll see that little bump up as we return from COVID, but we'll come back to that 2% decline over time. So when we look at Edinburgh, it'll replicate itself in this and in the other buildings. Okay, what we see here is the same as what we saw elsewhere, a slight bump as we return from that first year of COVID. But then a return to the previous trend of decreasing enrollment over time. The middle school is the same. Slide seven shows us that the trends in the middle school aren't different than what they are in the other buildings. We're at 675 now, but we'll see that that's closer to 600 by the end of the 2425 school year. This is even a little bit more predictable because we know who's coming out of the elementary school into these buildings as well. Okay, the data that, that I can show you both for these charts is for this five-year prediction, but it also goes back about the last 20 years to give us a similar picture that's reflected in these five-year trends here. Same thing at the high school, our 711 students that we have now mirrors what we saw with other district enrollment too. Okay, but these building pictures really just kind of reinforce what we're seeing on a district level. Because what I really want to focus on in terms of enrollment is how the context of enrollment frames the conversation that we're having about staffing. Okay. They're, they're very similar in what they do. All right, so let's transition to a little bit of a conversation about staffing. Okay, so when we talk staffing, this is the, this is the time of year when we talk about staffing. And that, a lot of that has to do with that March 1st date that's in the CBA agreement. And that March 1st date is the date when teachers submit their letters for retirement to be reimbursed for sick days. So any planning that we do prior to March 1st, we can make some guesses about who will or will not be back. But a lot of that guesswork is really proven unreliable for any kind of purposeful planning that we're going to do. So any decisions that we're talking about now regarding staffing exist in the context of our enrollment, but also within the context of our budget. Okay, so on slide 11 there, the context of our budget is something we've talked about a lot. Okay, we've talked about it a lot since the beginning of the school year. You've seen it in my 100 Days presentation. You've seen it in the Long Term Budget Planning Committee presentation. Mr. Fenda has spoken to it monthly? I don't even know if that's an understatement to say monthly. It's been part of our conversation throughout the year. And when we've looked at that picture of the budget, we see that in 2122, we used the fund balance over a million dollars, close to $2 million to balance that deficit in 2122. We saw that as a projection and prediction. Okay, we saw that in 2223, this February, as we look to the 2223 budget, we saw again, as that budget became more clear, a deficit of $3.5 million. Okay, to balance, which would require more of our fund balance to balance the 2223 budget. And what, what were really one-time projections are turning into accurate predictions. Okay, they're not just projections. We're seeing those projections manifest themselves in reality in terms of shortcomings financially, in terms of multimillion-dollar deficits over a period of years. And we talked about the fact that this practice is not sustainable. And we've seen what that instability, unsustainability looks like visually. You, you've seen this on more than one occasion. We've seen that, that unless we change our habits, unless we change our practices, we're going to run out of money in our savings account to balance our budget in the 25 school year. Okay, so how do we solve this problem? There isn't a single answer to that question. In fact, the answer instead to solving this problem, to maintaining some financial stability and fiscal solvency starts with a realization and acceptance that there is not just one answer to this question. Okay, there isn't one thing that we can do to solve this problem. Instead, we know that there are a variety of factors involved. Okay. We don't yet know what our funding from the state is going to look like. But we do know that our state funding is 51% of our revenue. Okay, that's a substantial portion. We, we do know that even if the governor's budget is passed, which is very generous toward education, even if that govern, even if our governor's budget is passed in the form that it exists, which it won't be, okay, we know that that alone is not going to solve our budget problem. In terms of local revenue that we generate from taxes, we know that if we raised taxes above the Act 1 index, if we went above the Act 1 index, which we're not, because we said we weren't, if we went above the Act 1 index, that alone would not solve our budget problem. We know also that any savings we realize through staffing, any steps we talk about tonight in terms of becoming more efficient in our staffing, even if we double what we suggest tonight in terms of savings, that alone is not going to solve our budget problem. If we brought back every kid who's in cyber charter school for us, if every one of them came back next year, that alone would not solve our budget problem. Instead, we're at a point now where we realize, and I think we've realized and come to this acceptance bit by bit at different stages for all of us and different parts of this conversation, we've come to accept and realize that it's only through a combination, a combined effort in all of these areas that we regain fighting, financial stability. One of these things by themselves is not going to do it. We know that. So let's talk about how we then regain the financial stability that we need. So what can we control? We can't control many of these things. Let's start at the top again. As you know, the state budget, that's not, that's not going to come until late, much later than we would want it to be, but we're talking, you know, summertime for that. The board won't decide on a final budget until June. Okay, so we're separate, we're two months away from that being the case. And we're working on our cyber education students, some of which have come back already since January. But that's something that's going to take months for us to figure out. And that's, that's a long-term summer project, too. That's going to influence where we are in the fall. So the essential piece of this pie, if we think of all of these things as slices in the pie that bring us back to financial stability, the piece of the pie that we can talk about now is staffing. All right, and it's also appropriate for us to talk about staffing because staffing, in terms of the impact that it has on our budget compared to other categories of expenditures. When we talk about staffing and salaries, wages, benefits, and taxes, this is 73% of our expenditures by object. Okay, this is a sizable portion of our expenditure. So us having this conversation now about staffing doesn't just fit in the timeline of where we are in the year. It's important in terms of priority, in terms of the impact that it can have on the financial stability of the district. All right, so how do we have that conversation about staffing in the context of our current financial reality? Okay, so as we approach conversations about staffing, there was one guiding question that we used to kind of guide that process. It was, are there ways that we can achieve, are there ways to achieve our instructional goals in a more efficient manner? Okay, are there ways for us to achieve our instructional goals in a more efficient manner? That's the question not only that we wanted to ask, that's the question that we have to ask, given the situation that we're in. How do we maintain who we are? How we do we maintain our identity as a district while operating more efficiently? Okay, not efficiently just out of desire, but out of efficiently, out of the need to do so. Okay, now, we want to maintain who we are. We want to maintain what makes us GM. But what we can't maintain is some of our habits. Okay. We can't maintain the habits that got us here into this situation. We have to evolve. We have to evolve to meet the needs of our financial reality. But we can do that while maintaining a commitment to keeping students at the center of all of our decision-making processes. Okay, and how students are affected by these decisions as well. Okay. It's also essential, you know, while, while we had this guiding question that really drove our discussions about staffing, we always had to consider and maintain an understanding of the impact, okay, of these changes and what they would be. We have to both anticipate them and understand them. Because when we do that, we're in a position then to support students and staff and anticipate what those needs are. Okay, to be there for them as we adjust to next year. All right, so the essential question guided the conversation with building administrators as we understood, and like I said, and this is a term I've come back to a couple of times in conversations with them, and we've had it ourselves too, is the inevitability of these changes. The inevitability of these changes are required, given all the things that we've talked about, given our financial reality and given what we've seen is the context of our enrollment projections as well. Okay, put those two things together, and these are essential conversations that we need to have. So the conversations revealed areas for efficiency that allowed us to maintain our instructional goals both at the middle school and at the high school. All right, so let's talk specifically about those positions at the middle school and the high school. All right, so when we talk about the interventionist position being eliminated, the interventionist position for enrichment and acceleration, we're talking about Scott Hutchinson at the middle school. We asked and saw that there were ways to maintain these services more efficiently. So when we talk about maintaining them, there are absolutely essential parts of this experience that we can maintain. We can still have experiences outside of the district that connect students to experiences in the community. Okay, both locally and regionally. We can still maintain that shared experience that kids have with like-minded peers during tutorial period every single day. We can still maintain the rigor in inquiry-based experiences for our students that need enrichment and acceleration. Okay, we can better utilize, there's some things we can do to achieve these things, one of which is better utilize the daily tutorial period for enrichment and gifted services. This is something that happens every day of the week for students. We can, depending on the final staffing picture, which as you know, takes time, each one of these staffing postings is up for 14 days. So we don't yet have a clear picture of what that staffing situation is. But depending on the staffing picture, we could distribute STEAM and/or social arts exploratories in a different way. And really possibly the most important element of all the conversations that we have had with parents of students with their GIEPs, with enrichment and activities like that, the most important thing we can do, the most valuable experiences that students have is when they experience enrichment connection in their actual classes. Because when they see connections between their enrichment and what they're actually learning in their classrooms, that's where real, true learning and enrichment and acceleration takes place. Okay, that is not to say, I am not saying, and we are not saying, let me clarify this again, that that is the only place that that enrichment and acceleration can take place or should take place. But it is an absolutely essential part of the enrichment and acceleration process that we would probably need to improve upon as a staff anyway. Okay. And we also know that there are school enrichment opportunities that exist outside of the school day that didn't exist during the last year or two during COVID that are all coming back where our students can experiencing those things outside of the day. And you know, anytime we talk about any of these programs, in, in particular, this one, there are great things about this program. There's no, any decision about this isn't saying that it's ineffective or not done well. It's not a comment on that. Instead, really what we're saying is that we can do these things more efficiently given the relatively very small number of students involved compared to other areas for potential change. Okay, and I think that's an important thing to remember is that we can do it more efficiently, given the really relatively small number of students we're talking about compared to other options for instructional, instructional change. Okay. Position number two is another one at the middle school. So another aspect of staffing that we considered when we had talked about that guiding question that we tasked ourselves with was maximizing, and we had to ask the question, are we maximizing the time that adults in our district spend with students and are responsible for students? So when we talked about the literacy coach position at the middle school, Lisa Brown's position, it was that position that we realized there are ways to meet the literary, literacy coach needs and what the talent and insight that she brings to that position without a full position that does not have direct, sizable, and regular daily accountability for students. Okay, in addition to that, now that we have a full-time curriculum coordinator, there, there are redundancies and overlapping of services between a literacy coach and a curriculum coordinator that can now be covered with support from a full-time curriculum coordinator. The third position I want to talk about at the middle school is one that is being evaluated. Okay, it is currently being evaluated. We're talking, in other words, the decision has not been finalized on this. We're talking about the club room position at the middle school, Anna Elliott's position. We recently received her letter of retirement, which has prompted this conversation about what that room looks like. You know, and when, when we say evaluate, what we're talking about is just, let's remember our context for that room as we re-educate ourselves with that. That room was created over two decades ago after the tragic shooting of John Gillette. And students and the staff had a lot of needs in terms of support, both immediately and soon after that. And that, that, that room was very valuable as part of that healing process. Since that time, there, we've added a lot of layers of services for students that did not exist at the time that that room was created. Since that time, we've added a refocus room. Okay, we've added a refocus room that can expand and evolve beyond what it is now to support what it does now in additionally student mental health needs. We have added two emotional support teachers to that building. We have added a full-time SAP counselor to that building. We've added two full-time school psychologist interns for mental health services that did not exist until last year. Those are, we, we need to understand, those are district-wide positions, but they can be allocated to places of need. Okay, so they can be targeted to a place like the middle school if we identify and anticipate a need there. So when we evaluate this position, the question that we're asking ourselves is, we need, and we're asking, making sure that we need to evaluate the most effective and efficient way to meet the mental health needs of our student. Okay, of our student population in that building. What is the most effective and efficient way and sustainable way to meet the mental health needs of our students? As I said, that conversation also took us to the high school. Slide 19 here, when we look at the high school, we identified that we can be more efficient in our world language offerings. In particular, our Mandarin content, which is provided by Pei Yun Hakin. She is an excellent and outstanding teacher, but the student interest in Mandarin has dramatically declined in recent years. Our Mandarin classes average 5.6 students, okay, in them in terms of enrollment. Because of the class size in other areas of world language, the electives that Peiud offers, that, that are quite popular, that average over 20 students in her elective classes, which are not the core Mandarin classes, those elective classes, because of efficiencies in the world language department, we don't even have to lose those electives. Okay, those can be picked up by other members of the world language department and their classes as a result can be more efficiently managed on that master schedule. The final position that, that I want to talk about, I'm not really going to talk about. At this time, the fifth and final position is merely an anticipated vacancy at the high school that I can discuss in more detail when that becomes official. Okay, so in review, let's take a look at these following five positions. These are the areas where we could be more efficient and still maintain our targeted need in identifying what students need, both in terms of their learning and in their mental health. Okay, there are places for all of these teachers to remain, teachers in the General McLean School District. Okay, that is not changing. And after a conversation with the business manager, Mr. Fenda, the savings from these changes is between $450,000 and $550,000, depending on the final movements and decisions that come out of, that come out of this process. But I think we're pretty confident in that range. Okay, in terms of where, where we are now with that. It's, it's really important. When we talk about savings, it's important to note that financial savings come with a cost. Okay, financial savings come with a cost, and they come with challenges for us in the district. Let's talk specifically and then universally at the middle school. We can anticipate larger exploratory class sizes. Okay, now granted, this was a conscious choice. This was a conscious choice versus larger core class sizes. Okay, not that we're looking or want larger exploratory class- Not that we're looking or want larger exploratory class sizes, but given the other option of larger course class sizes, this was a conscious decision on our part to weigh that and see that it was something we can manage, okay? Another thing is that teachers will need professional development and support, okay? They're going to need professional development and support for any kind of meaningful enrichment or extension of their content. This is something we would have done regardless of the situation that we're in, but the situation that we're in really makes it a priority. As discussed in earlier slides, we are going to have to evolve and we're going to have to modify how we provide student supports, both through our current services that we offer, new services that we can offer, and explorations about how to effectively, in terms of mental health support, explore how we're using two full-time school counselors that exist in the middle school as well, okay? There could be options for us there too. And at the high school, we understand that the redistribution of electives is going to be challenging for the world language department, but that is something that we can manage. And anytime you reduce a staff by two in a building, for the high school staff, they're going to have to shoulder those responsibilities of duties that get covered, okay? And then that's not something easily done by the staff. And that really leads to that overall conversation that we're having now. We need to understand that in the year that was probably the most challenging year ever to be a teacher, the news that we need to do more with less is asking them to do a lot, okay? That is something that we cannot and should not forget. And when we ask them during the most challenging year to look forward and do more with less, that potentially takes a toll. And we're asking a lot of our teachers to do that. We're not asking, I don't think, something that's not doable, something that's not sustainable, and to be honest, something that just has to happen. The alternative is not great, but we would be naive and negligent if we didn't understand the costs that come with savings, okay? In terms of what that means to us in the district. So let's revisit that guiding question, okay? Are there ways to achieve instructional goals in a more efficient manner? That started our staffing conversation, that ends our staffing conversations, and it's a part of all of our staffing conversations moving forward. These are all difficult choices. And even though, what I just showed you, if I go back one slide? These are all difficult choices. But we make difficult choices now for even, for as hard as they are, to avoid worse alternatives in the future. I think that's really something important to understand now. These are not things we would do independently on our own, these are not things we would do outside of a particular context other than the one that we're in. But we make difficult choices now to avoid a series of worse alternatives, okay? Those worse alternatives involve spending down our fund balance, okay? When you have no money left in your savings account to balance your budget, you end up on a state mandated financial improvement plan, okay? That state mandated financial improvement plan is incredibly burdensome. It's what Erie is trying to get out of now, and it's what other districts in northwestern Pennsylvania are facing like us if we don't make the changes and adapt our behaviors in the ways that we're talking about. What becomes a real difficult choice too is the consolidation of an elementary school or elementary schools, okay? Multiple, okay? Closed into one, close one into two, any variation of that point is something that we would like to avoid. We're talking about avoiding firing and furloughing teachers, okay? Both because they're effective, but firing and furloughing teachers happens in a way that we don't have control over, we have less control over, and it's more damaging and we have less control over that guiding question about how do we make choices that least impact students or allows us to maintain our instructional goals for kids, okay? When you're firing and furloughing teachers, you don't have the control that we have now to do that. We could talk about the fact that worst decisions down the road were things that we absolutely talked about with the long-term budget planning committee and have been discussed with this board. We don't have to provide transportation, okay? That's a real cost saver. Is that a conversation anybody wants to take part in? I don't think so, okay? Myself included in that. So these difficult choices that we make now, in an attempt to control what we can control, helps us avoid far worse alternatives, okay, in the future. Finally, most importantly though, I think the thing to remember while we talk about staffing in any kind of meaningful way, is that we're built to do hard things, okay? We're built to do challenging things. And these are things that we can do, we can do these things because none of these things, despite how hard they are, despite how challenging they are, despite the toll that they take, none of these things change who we are or what we prioritize. We're going to evolve, we're going to modify, but they're not going to change who we are or what we prioritize. Instead, these changes are essential, these changes are necessary as we have to adapt to the financial reality that we've been dealing with, the enrollment reality that I presented to you, and most importantly, the needs of our students in that context of all three of those things, okay? So that's a summary, both of enrollment and staffing, as we stand here now on April 13th. It'll continue to evolve and change, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about what we've talked about so far.
I got a couple ones, start with a mechanical one. On the enrollment graph, just the one where you had multiple years and all the students in the declining, do those numbers include charter but not homeschool? Do you know what the, is charter counted as enrollment or is it not included?
Those are our average daily membership numbers, so I'll check that.
Those are, those are actually membership numbers, okay?
Yep.
So that may be just.
Those are ADM members, so yeah.
I, sometimes different ones have been presented.
No, they are, yeah, they're not the same, you're right, yeah.
So, so those are the ones that are actually in the buildings, okay? There was a staffing change for McCain Elementary for the kindergarten having a bump up, is that, was that only a one-year thing or is that a?
Via, oh, yeah, McCain kindergarten this year, we had it the fourth round because that was a federally funded one-year position, okay? And that, that average class size got to a number that for kindergarten was not appropriate. It's challenging for, for second, third, and fourth grade, but it's less dire than it is for kindergarten. Now, that's, we have talked about the fact that that bubble of kids, you know, is going to be moving through each grade level there. So we have to be cognizant of the needs of those teachers because their class sizes are going to bump up each one of those years that that bubble of kids goes through. But that, specifically that kindergarten was a one-year funded position.
And then, just to, my understanding is while we are eliminating positions, we do have openings, and so we're not, we're not eliminating more positions than we have teachers.
Correct, and that's, you know, when, when I mentioned each one of these positions, when I had them on that summary page and noted that there are teaching positions available for all of these people, okay? The phrase that we talked about for the last couple of months was, can we maintain our instructional and student need goals while being aggressive through attrition, okay? And it was after March 1st that we had a sense of where those attrition opportunities were. There are some that it doesn't work, you know what I mean? We have to fill the position, there's not an opportunity that's a good fit, you know, for that move, but these were five places that we anticipate being able to meet those needs.
I have, I have one other thing, but it's kind of a long one, so I would like to open it up for anybody else's questions before I.
All right, I think my first question is, the enrichment program that was mentioned, so, and I'm kind of piecing this together from our committee session as well, but the enrichment program is not necessarily going to be eliminated, you're just going to offer it to the larger population, or is it actually going to be entirely eliminated and you're going to have those additional?
No, that's a good question.
Initiatives are going to be in the classrooms.
No, I would say, I would say none of those three things, but that's a really good question for clarifying. It's not being, enrichment services are not being eliminated, okay? GIEP services are not being eliminated, okay? The way we offer those services now though is not sustainable, okay? And nor are we taking enrichment or acceleration options for our most talented students and just saying, like leveling the playing field and say they don't need acceleration or enrichment. They still do.
Yeah.
And there's different ways for us to provide that than what we're doing right now. So that's a really good question. I think sometimes when things change, we think they're going away forever. When we ask ourselves to modify and evolve, we think they're being cut and eliminated. Those things are not synonymous. I know it feels that way in some ways, but no, we have an obligation to maintain these opportunities because they're student needs, okay? We also have an obligation to identify that as something that's not sustainable the way we're doing it now, and we need to do it differently.
So then my second question is, in what expectation level are those things going to be met outside of that? Have you thought about who is going to take on those roles prior to eliminating this?
Yes.
Rearranging, I don't want to say.
If we go back to, I don't know if I want to go to it physically, but there's a couple things to consider with that. So for reference in your thing, or if you want to look at it when this is posted publicly, that slide was, slide 16. It lists on there some alternatives in terms of, well, it lists two things. It lists what we can maintain. In other words, what do we currently do now that we can continue to do? And also underneath that maintenance section are options for us to explore in terms of other ways of doing the things that we've done before. Now, in terms of the exact people that are going to do that, we are very early in that bid process, okay? We've only really finished one phase of that. So we're a solid, I don't know, what do you, a month? Solid month to two away from really knowing who's available to do what. That being said, we don't wait two months, you know what I mean, to see what's going to happen. We have an idea, we anticipate, we have some contingencies, and we have some ideas, but we don't know that for sure yet, okay? Who's going to be able to offer what, okay? But there's options for all of that.
I just wanted to clarify who would be in charge of those things, but yes, you have time to figure out. Well, who, who is that going to ultimately fall on to is more of where I'm trying to organize the setup is, you know, because it can transpire that some of these things are in the classroom on the teachers who are going to ultimately take on these other changes. And I, I understand that these things have to happen for efficiency, and that makes sense.
It doesn't all have to fall back on teachers though to do that. For example, we, I mean, you know, with some degree of certainty, we talked about the fact that Mr. Hutchinson will likely be back in the middle school, okay? With him there, depending on what other movements happen, there can be things, there can be enrichment in opportunities for him to maintain directly, you know, but that depends on, on the rest of the staffing situations. That level of involvement, it depends on math enrollment in the math courses, you know, all of those things are factored into that, so.
And that's, that's more clarification than I was looking for.
That's right.
I have others, but go ahead, Luke.
Well, actually, ours work together, so maybe, maybe what, what I'm going to say will segue into what you're going to do next. So I've been blessed to have some, some top students. I've been just, it's been a, you know, it's a God, a God benefit, not anything that I can take credit for, but just in hearing the comment that was made about, you know, the fact that there are a low number in that area is true. I mean, that's, you do, everybody's familiar with standard deviation or the standard bell curve and all those kinds of things, the top end is the short, you know, the short side, you know, we got short numbers at the bottom, short numbers up. So I, I do think that Jim, I fully understand the need for balanced adjustment, right? I am not, I, I will, you know, every, every area needs to take the licks, like I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disputing this, I think you've done a balanced plan, like that's, I want to say it on the front end. But as far as things to challenge those students, I guess, looking at that list, as a parent who I realize I've continued to homeschool my high schoolers to provide my own supplementals to it, definitely look broadly. I mean.
I'm sorry, I lost that, I lost that, definitely look what?
Look broadly, go outside the walls, think about all the possible ways to challenge those advanced top students, because they can do some amazing things. We just need to really think about, you know, things that aren't that expensive but can really give them some incredible opportunities to do, you know, college things, get a lot of college knocked out, there's just a lot of things that, you know, one of my hesitations when I saw the adjustment from the middle school was what that removal of the track that got them into math earlier probably means you're going to see the calculus BC enrollment drop. Like, you know, that, that, that's probably going to be a result because it's just not going to, it's not going to have the, quite the feeder that it did when you had a set of students that were all, that needed four maths and, and had already.
And I would just say anecdotally, the flip side of that is my experience is that the BC enrollment went up because students came out of middle school with a deeper actual understanding of the content that they went through, rather than just having buzzed through it quickly. So you know what I mean? Like I said, that's really anecdotal.
But it, but it means that we've got a lot of students doing five things of math, that's the difference, is you're trying to expect them to do that. But what I'm trying to say is there's plenty of ways to challenge them when you go beyond that. I, and again, anecdotally for my, for myself, I've really questioned to a certain extent, why do two semesters at high school of calculus versus getting that calculus at a college level and having it? And if we made that more of a smoother process for the people, and that's really my, my point is just to keep expanding on your challenging for those, those top 10, 5% of students, that you can do it in a fairly efficient manner when you don't have to do it in a staffing manner, right? It's, it's finding those, those ways to really challenge them, really push the envelope with them, because that's, again, that's, you know, an extreme on the curve, and it's a place that's worth paying some attention to and trying to figure out how to, how to push it. But yes, you don't have to hire a teacher for it, that's what I'm, that's the balance that I'm trying to, trying to put into it, so I appreciate the opportunity.
No problem, and I, I think that that shared, I think there's a vision that we share there too in terms of that experiential learning for, one of the differences I think between enrichment and advancement for middle-level learners versus high school learners, and not that this shouldn't be a part of high school too, but that middle level should be really experiential, okay, in terms of exposure, yeah, exposure to different things, experiences to different things that allow them to equally identify an area of interest and also eliminate areas as well. And I definitely, you know what, I tried that, I got to see that, I'm not really crazy about that. And then that still is part of the secondary process in the nine to 12 building as well, but the nine to 12 building, we should be developing opportunities where they can, for the people that do know, that's, that's what, they have an area that they can begin to narrow that, okay? That narrowed experience at the middle level could be really detrimental. So what you're talking about is really, I think, applicable to the middle level because we should really be focusing on a diverse set of experiences and exposures for kids. Is it possibly easier to do that via a certain model? Sure, but I think that goes back to the sustainability question in terms of an appropriate financial consideration needs to be made when we ask that question.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I have, I do have something to add. Well, two things actually, and I'm going to bridge some of our committee conversation into this. So one thing to bridge off of what Luke was saying about those opportunities. One, I had mentioned about the Mandarin program. When previously in other schools, I have seen that when they cut a, or eliminate a type of language or any, there's other courses that you could do it with as well, but you offer it, I know we're trying to find programs that would offer a cyber platform of these things, where you could have students have a self-taught course where they go and they do it on their own for those kids that can handle it. I mean, that top portion, that's what you expect of them, right? They can handle their instruction individually and independently because they're motivated, they're self-motivated. So that was an opportunity. The second thing that I want to make very, I thought was interesting in our committee meeting, was that Mr. Hutchinson taught STEAM or STEM, and that that was only granted to a small portion of the students. That course is typically now considered an everybody gets exposure course. So I am surprised at the middle school level that is not an everybody, a general ed elective. And when you're speaking of those things, I think that that is something very important to consider when you talk about that exposure. That me, I mean, I personally feel like that has to happen. That's where all of the application of all of your curriculum classes, your core classes come together. And that should be granted to every student. If our mission statement is for all students, that should be under that gap of all students. And I I would hope that in this reconfiguring that that is an option for all students. If you're going to take the time to make these staffing changes, I think that was, that will maximize student learning and improvement overall. So I think that that should be considered at some point or in some context. And I think that was all of my rambling.
No, that wasn't rambling. I think that's applicable to what we were talking about in terms of, you know, enrichment and acceleration versus what, you know, when I say versus, it implies that it's an either or thing versus opportunities that should exist for all students. And really, we should be doing both of those things, which is hard. But that change process is something that we could start.
My only comment is just to follow, you know, and enhance or agree very much with Dana is I love that we have so many opportunities for, you know, whatever, I don't know how you want to call it, I don't want to say top whatever those students are, but we have so many students that are regular at or just, you know, honor students, but they don't get any of those opportunities. So I really like, I mean, I understand that we were, you're gonna find, it seems like you're finding a way to not only enhance this program or keep it going for these kids. It actually sounds like this is creating opportunities for, you know, the rest of our students that are gonna be, it's gonna rub off on them to be, you know, to be enhanced and pushed. And so I just, I don't see it all as a bad doom and gloom. It sounds like it actually might be a lot more reasonable for a lot more of our students.
And I I think you're right, and none of that is easy. Okay, none of that is easily done at all. It's gonna take concerted effort, it's gonna take collaboration, it's going to take feedback. It's gonna take a lot of patience on everybody's part in identifying needs and areas of support to be part of that process because this is not easy. What we're asking is not easier, folks, so.
I do have one other question. So in total, I I I understand that there's been a lot of positions that are going up for bid, and technically they're not going up for bid because people are moving voluntarily or because they have to. We talked about that. But how many actual staff members are we going to be decreasing by overall?
Including the anticipated, including the unofficial anticipated vacancy, we'd be talking about five, five, yeah.
And that's in all buildings?
That includes two things. That includes, that includes the anticipated vacancy. And that also assumes, though, it assumes that the club room goes that way, too, when actually that's still in technically being evaluated.
So right now, it is max with what you.
Max five.
In all buildings.
Correct.
Well, and and that's where I want to clarify, we had a one-year elementary position that is not being continued.
Yeah, so in in addition to that one-year position, we have three interventionist positions at the elementary school, although we're also federally funded. Any of the the positions that are one-year federally funded positions, we we said from the beginning, you know, when we talked about, when we approved those positions, that they were one-year positions. And when the money went away, the positions went away.
I I just want us to be fully, it was just being careful.
And I just didn't want us to leave, yeah, that was a good point to remember that. And that's on that document that notes the individual ones that we can go through when we talk about individual names. But yeah, included in that, but just it isn't listed here because it didn't generate cost savings are the three interventionists in the McCain Elementary position.
I do have one more. And I'm being redundant in a way because we talked about this in committee, too. But I wanted to note on whole class sizes, since you have the graphs and everything in front of us about that hope that you will get students to return back to those original numbers ideally. Those, how much do you predict that those will increase all of these class sizes? Those are being factored into all of these changes?
That's a good question. So spread across K to twelve, the number of students, oh, gosh, I just, we just looked at this number, Bill, from Ann this week. I want to say it's right now at, I have sixty-eight in my head, sixty-eight or seventy-two. So if we brought all those back and that's distributed across K to twelve, that's impactful, but it's not debilitating. You know what I mean? That's something we could absorb with issue, we could absorb that, yeah.
Right, I'm just curious of like, what would your, what would your goal class size be at that point? To keep your scheduling consistent for these teachers?
At which level?
Let's just say high school for right now.
Oh, that varies depending on, that varies depending on course.
Okay.
And, you know, what type of course is it?
So would you you max out at twenty-five, though, like what?
I wouldn't commit to a number on that.
I mean, that plays a large factor.
I would say with the number we commit, I'll tell you the number, the place we did commit to a number was twenty-fourth in kindergarten. That's when we went, that's when we went to the fourth position at McCain.
The one thing I want to fill in for Dana is that there's actually different classes have different targets, right? Dan, in high school, so it's not, there isn't actually a one ratio number in the high school. It actually is varied depending on what the class is.
Yeah, that's correct.
I guess I'm saying like, there's no way that you should have twenty-seven students that a teacher, I mean, this happens, this is happening. This is reality right now is that teachers are teaching class sizes up to twenty-seven to thirty people, which is just becoming, you talk about the expectation ratio there, it's just, it's plus on top of you want to add these enrichment things. That needs to be thought about as an expectation of teachers.
That's fair.
Just thinking of if your goal is to attract all these people back with reducing class amounts where you can distribute them, you're pigeonholing a little bit.
Well, just, but just to be careful on the track back, if we get sixty-eight cyber school students back, that's some real money. So that gives new options for staffing. So I I don't see that as a risk. I see that as a go for it, you get them, I don't think you're gonna have trouble funding.
That might be a change you might need to occur.
You might hire, you're gonna, you might hire two, you could hire at least two teachers by getting all that.
I'm hoping that's still on the table.
Yeah.
I'm hoping.
A balance of all the different expenses, right?
Yes.
Anything else from any other members for on this presentation? And we're gonna hear more about this, I'm sure, next month. Is there?
I don't have any else.
Anything else? Do we want to move on then to budget status, Mr. Fenda?
Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, this is a very quick update that I'll share. My, I'll share my screen in a second here. Okay. Just three slides, very quick. So our status as we sit here tonight, April thirteenth. First of all, what we would like to do is push back the timeline for the budget approval. And instead of approving the final budget in May, we'd like to recommend pushing that to June, the June fifteenth voting meeting. And working back from that, we need at least thirty days. We would approve the the proposed final budget at the May eleventh at a limited agenda meeting. And the reason for that is because, as Dr. Lane had described, there's already been some work done in terms of in terms of retiring teachers and shuffling around the workforce and so forth. That has generated the savings that he talked about in the budget. And so that that's a start, but we're not done. We still have work to do. So where we are now, if you remember in February, the bogey number that we talked about or that I talked about was three and a half million. With the savings that we've identified so far, we're at three million instead of three and a half million. And there's more more to come. And that's why we'd like to allow more time to to evaluate the budget. Again, dig into some of the details and look at some of those list of suggestions from the Citizens Advisory Committee, from administrators, from the community, and see which which of those we can address for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year and also going forward into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I'm I'm going to move right ahead to item one E, projects, and just give you a very quick overview. You've seen this presentation before. These are all the federal so-called COVID grants, the ESRS and the the ARP and and so forth. Many of these are already completed. In fact, the first five from left to right are complete. And the other ones are still open, but you can see their status. We completed all of the quarterly reports that were due for these various grants. They were due at the beginning of this month, the beginning of April. And we still have those last three that will be open between now and possibly as far as September of two thousand twenty-four. So that's where we are with all those those grants. And and then the next thing, the other projects that we have going on, we received the bids and opened the bids for the HVAC work at the high school and the middle school. And you'll see the results of those bids and the bid opening a little later on the agenda for next week's voting meeting. We have draft specifications for the roof replacements. So we should be ready to advertise and put out for bids at the end of April. The contracted transportation and the fuel storage tanks, a similar thing. We have the drafts ready and we're expecting to be able to put out the advertisements and the bids for those two projects at the end of April as well. So a lot of lot going on behind the scenes in terms of projects. There's a item one F, Erie County Recycling. This is just an informational item for the board and everybody in the community, really. We received a letter from from Erie County Planning and Community Development. They are working on a five-year recycling plan. And for anybody who is interested, there's a website there on the Erie County website, there's a recycling plan document that's available for community review. It's in a forty-five re, forty-five day review period right now. So if you're interested in recycling, that document is is only about a hundred and fifty-four pages long. So I'm sure everyone will want to rush out and look at that right away. And then that's everything for study session review on the introduction or the the informational items.
Any questions for Bill on that information presented? And if not, would we like to move on to the agenda review? A policy and co-curricular, Dr. Lane?
Sure, policy and co-curricular. We had a conversation tonight regarding Paul, the first reading of a revised policy nine oh three. And if you remember, nine oh three is public participation at board meetings. And we we looked at nine oh three in a couple of different ways. Attorney Kressman heard what the board had to say a couple of meetings ago. And him and Attorney McDonald tried to capture some of those appropriately in into policy nine oh three regarding public participation because we, you know, we heard the concern about, for example, public sharing of addresses and things like that, while also kind of balancing that with really specific language i- in the Sunshine Act, you know, that says who can participate, you know, at board meetings, and it clarifies who that is, you know, current students, parents of current students, current employees, parents of tuition students, you know, those kind of folks. But the revisions to nine oh three that you can see in your folder and they'll be available on the website as well. Note, alternative pathways for pe, for us, alternate, alternate pathways by which the board can confirm that people are one of those things they need to be to speak at a board meeting. Okay, whether it be by sharing addresses when they initially sign up with Sarah, whether it's by signing the log sheet to sign up that night to speak, or any of the other couple of ways that are noted on here. The 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 goal of capturing those revisions to nine oh three was to open those pathways. Still maintain some ability to, for accountability, to identify who our residents and taxpayers are because that's explicitly who's allowed to speak at the meeting. But I think there's more doors to doing that now than there were before. And then items two, three, and four are individual personnel items, and we could talk about those in executive.
Thank you, Mr. Fenda, Finance and District Operations. Or do you, are you, you have more to talk about than just what we talked about? I'm sorry.
Is Dr. is Dr. Lane done?
Oh, I'm sorry, are you done?
I sure am.
Yeah, he's done.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Yes, under Finance and District Operations, we have, there's only a couple of motions here, so I'm not going to share my screen. But we have up for consideration to renew two facility use requests, two leases. One is for the Tri-County Intermediate Unit to lease classroom space at McCain Elementary for its early intervention program. That's for eleven thousand three hundred dollars for the year. And then also for the YMCA of Erie to lease space at McCain Elementary School for not, for six thousand sixty dollars per year, for the year. And then all the other terms and conditions would remain the same.
It's gonna be the same question.
The committee, next item is a proposal from Wellard Corporation. This is an engineering and design and drafting firm to provide professional services for the design and engineering services for the district's fuel, storage, and dispensing systems. Estimated not to exceed number of thirteen thousand six fifteen. And also for construction management services estimated to be nine thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars. The next thing, and actually, I will share my screen for this next item.
While you're doing that, Bill, the renewals, are those adjusted at all from previous year?
Those are flat from this year.
Did we, I think we, because we upped them last year, and I think that we.
Sorry, I I just am asking, I'll take the administration's recommendation.
I know, I know that we talked about it, I know that we upped them all by like two and a half percent, but I don't, I mean, we just. I guess it's it's been a hard year, we'll leave it, let's, can we, can we put it on a tickler next year? Let's revisit the lease rates because we did not agree some this year, is that okay? Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's, I mean, is that what you're thinking?
That's always check.
All right, what you see on the screen here is the bid tabulation for the HVAC upgrades. I apologize, it doesn't say that these are the upgrades for both the middle school and the high school combined. And the work on these would start at the high school this summer, late summer or fall, and run to the end of the calendar year and then start in next spring at the middle school. So you see there the bids for general construction, the low bidder was Considine Bible, a bid of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. There were two other bidders for general construction. For HVAC, there were three bidders, the low bid was Scobell, four million six hundred ninety-four thousand. And for electrical, there were also three bidders, and the low bid there was three, three hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars for a company called Blackhawk Neff out of Newcastle, Pennsylvania. a company called Blackhawk Neff out of Newcastle, Pennsylvania. So if you add up those three lowest bids, our total would be $5.4 million. And that is lower than what our architect had had estimated. They were estimating over six, around 6.3 or 6.4 million, as I recall. So that was good news. We really didn't expect that. We thought that the numbers would come in closer to the estimate or even above it. So that was good news. And just remember there, we'll be using the federal funds from S R two and S R three, which means our maximum, I'm sorry, our minimum district out of pocket, either in cash or from bonds, would be about $2.3 million for those projects. And we also had a we have a letter of recommendation. I don't think I have it open here, but it's a letter of recommendation from our architect, just recommending those three low bidders for the projects. And then back to the agenda. So there's that item for the low bidders and the construction. And then finally, number four on the agenda, we have recommendation to consider the the annual, this is the annual resolution for summer help at the service center for a lot of the outdoor work, for painting the buses, for cleaning the buses, so on and so forth. And these are are, these have been standard number of hours, maximum number of hours, and the rates are no different from last year for that temporary summer work. And that is that is everything for Finance and District Operations.
Just one clarifying question. We go to item number two, and we're talking about the this Wellert Corporation. The item B, construction management services estimated to be, is that that company or is that Chris overs like who is our guy? Is Chris going to oversee that or is that their?
No. Chris Coughlin helped us find this company, which was really not an easy task. There apparently aren't a lot of companies that do. There's certainly a lot of engineering and design companies, but not as many that were willing or able to do this work at this time with the backlog of projects. So Chris helped us identify this company, put us in touch. They are the ones, you may remember, they came out and evaluated the system last year. And so now we're in the next phase here to do the design and engineering work. And they they somewhat reluctantly agreed that they would manage the the project as well, be the project contract manager. So once they write up the design and engineering and the drawings and so forth, we would advertise for bids and, you know, to provide the labor materials and equipment and services to do the work to switch those tanks around from gasoline to diesel and diesel to gasoline.
I know it's not a specialty. I was just curious to know who this person would sort of be reporting to or accountable to. You know, is it a fox in the hen house that he, you know, is the one who is I am I'm managing construction that my company is going to do, and so I'm just going to tell you it's okay. I mean, I don't mean a nefarious thing. It's like, is there some third party checks and balance to that's, you know, that is definitely looking out for our best interest? Like, would Chris be involved? Is Chris going to watch this and see it?
Chris, no, Chris is not going to be involved. So really, the the hierarchy is that Wellert will be the the construction manager and oversee the contractor or contractors. And then Wellert, the Wellert personnel will effectively report to Tom Scrupsky.
I, Paul, I'm not trying to get in the weeds. I just was trying to understand when we, I mean, when when where Chris's role starts and begins. Thank you. Thank you. Is that it for that?
Yes, yes, that's it.
All right, Dr. Carnes.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowe, for curriculum and instruction. Item number one is requesting that the board ratify the addition of three individuals to our substitute teacher list as listed. Item number two is the consideration of approval of retirement for a teacher from the middle school. Item number three, we have the request to have one student as a tuition student next school year and two students to complete the school year this year as tuition students. Item number four, we discussed in committee, we're asking the board to consider the approval of a curriculum revision, a new course, an elective to be offered at the high school. Title of that course is Struggle and Triumph: History Through Sports. We had a great conversation about this in the committee meeting. This is a course that was designed by Mr. Stauffer. It is not a course that looks at great teams in sports. This is a course that looks at history through the lens of sports. And each module within this course is a different sport or sports and includes things that students may have seen in one of their US history courses touched on, but they're going to get a different perspective of that historical event. We believe that this is going to be something that's interesting to lots of students, not just students who are athletes or interested in sports. With any elective that we offer in the high school, it would require a minimum number of students to express interest in order to run. But we're confident that with Mr. Stauffer teaching it, with it being offered, that there is going to be interest in this. If you have a chance to look at it, it there was some community members in our in our committee meeting who who expressed that they wish that they could take it. So I think it's, if approved, I think it will be a nice addition to the elective offerings. Dr. Wise is going to be there, so we need to let Mr. Stauffer know.
Yeah, we have tuition students. They can they can come back to high.
We talked about it as a possible revenue stream, so. Not you, Dr. Wise. Item number five is the consideration of approval for Unified Talent applicant tracking and Unified Talent School Spring Job Board Unlimited. If this is approved at the next board meeting, no one will be happier than Mrs. Grabsky. We currently use a software to manage our applicant tracking that is is difficult to use, to say the least. People who apply for jobs, almost all of them have to reach out to Sarah with questions. That includes myself. When I applied for my job, I inadvertently applied for another job. So I'm glad to not be a second grade teacher right now. But the applicant tracking software that we're recommending is used in Fairview and in Mill Creek. That's nice because we get a lot of the same applicants. Folks who apply in one of those districts can easily transfer their resume, their cover letter, while they would change their cover letter, their standard app. Some of those things would be able to transfer over. It'll be a nice upgrade for us, and it's instructional and non-instructional positions. And number six, Dr. Lane mentioned the fact that we have interns who work with our school psychologists. There's two that will need approval for next year. The item number seven is a personnel item that the high school assistant principal. And then finally, number eight is the consideration for ratification of a long-term substitute teacher. And that's the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Thank you.
Just real quick. When you get an intern for this, and there's a stipend, are they our employee or are they just 1099?
Dr. Lane, do you know the answer to that? I don't.
How about you, Bill?
And I was going to look to Mr. Canada, and I think we're coming back to Mr. Fenda here.
We pay them through payroll and withhold taxes and the like. So, yeah, they're considered an employee.
Kind of wish they weren't, but. Is there anything else right now, or are we ready to go into an executive session? Okay, we're going to. Oh, I'm sorry, Sheri, go ahead. I apologize.
It's it. I'm not trying to cause a problem. I just, for my brain, and I'm not in disagreement with the long-term sub. I just have never asked, what is the procedure for choosing a long-term sub? Is it like a I'm asking, truly asking a question?
In a lot of cases, we will go through a truncated hiring process. So for instance, we're going to have a maternity leave in the middle school. We will, we've already reached out to local universities to collect applicants who may be interested. We'll meet with them, the building administration and myself, and select a candidate. In this particular case, it's an individual who has been in that room many, many days this year, who will be finishing out the year. Okay, it's a good question. Thanks.
Yeah, we're just going to reiterate the fact that this is, if you look at the position that's getting filled, this is the person that's been there when this person has been absent throughout. So, yeah, that's a good question.
Anything else? We will be going into an executive session for employment issues. Is there any other reason for an executive session that? Okay, then, and there will be, obviously, it's a study session. We do not vote. And we will convene immediately from our study session. So thank you for coming this evening. If you came to our committee meetings, thank you for coming to our committee meetings. And we may see you next week. If not, have a wonderful week and happy Easter. And we may see you next week. If not, have a wonderful week and happy Easter.